So I'm gonna call this, uh, meeting of the ordinance subcommittee Wednesday, October 12th to order six oh five. Looks like we're all here. I don't see anybody for public speak time. Uh, minutes though, I feel like JP sent us minutes.
Mm-hmm.
So let's, um, did everybody have a chance to review it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the ordinance minutes of nine twenty-eight? Second, all in favor? Nine, okay.
Same.
One abstention, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, so, tonight on our agenda, we still have the, um, food truck, proposed food truck ordinance and plastic bags. Uh, we still have the signs as well, but, um, we're kinda waiting, I'm planning forward for that. Uh, just, I wanted to let you guys know that I did talk to Jackie Duda, she can't make tonight's meeting. She can make our, would be our normal next scheduled meeting, which would be, um, uh, next Wednesday. So I think what we'll do is we'll, um, uh, try to make sure that every, all the players, um, are, are gonna come to that so that she can have some input and we can have, um, everybody involved to kinda like give some input. For our lone visitor here, uh, just an update on, so about a year ago, we looked at, um, the idea that food trucks were gonna be coming to East Hampton. Um, and really what we wanted to do was we wanted to find a way to streamline the process to make it so, um, food trucks wouldn't have a cumbersome process to come into the city. Um, but, and, you know, really, at the, at this point, we don't feel like there is really a cumbersome process. It's, it's really pretty much run through the health department. Um, and the city doesn't have a whole lot of, um, input on the licensing or, um, and we don't have any regulations other than, and this is where it gets kind of interesting. Um, we do have what's called a mobile vendor ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so, in this ordinance, it is basically, um, describes a, a, a mobile vendor. And really, it seems like it would be, um, someone who is maybe having a push cart, um, that can go to, uh, you know, the fireworks or sell hot dogs down the street. Um, but, at the end of the day, this kind of governs food trucks as well, this is the closest thing. Uh, so we wanted to, we wanted to try to fix some of the pieces in this, to pull out, um, things that might apply to food trucks and have them within their own section.
Right.
So, um, that's kind of where we're at now. Uh, really, the biggest thing that we're looking at, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we've been talking about is the idea of having areas that are, um, kind of food truck catch zones. Um, and the reason why we're looking at that is so, for example, a food truck couldn't pull up into a public parking space and camp out there. Um, and, you know, like, we were thinking, uh, one of the things is like, you know, having a certain buffer between, um, exist, like, brick and mortar restaurants, um, and, you know, uh, certain parking spots within the city that are identified as food truck catching areas.
Mm-hmm.
You know, for example, like, the first parking spot on Cottrell Street right here, in front of the boardwalk. Having that be a designated food truck space, it wouldn't necessarily look any different, but it would be a place where a food truck would have permission to stay for, you know, an extended period of time, um, within the normal parking, um, times. Uh, and then, you know, looking at the mill area. Um, so having different areas within the mill lots that would be appropriate for food trucks to, you know, um, be without any sort of special event. And I think, you know, um, having a section for special events, like for Food Truck Friday, that, you know, there, there could be, um, an exception within, you know, say if we said there was, you know, four spaces at, you know, um, in front of abandoned building that were food truck catch areas. You know, for a Food Truck Friday where you're gonna have more and you're gonna cordon off an area, then, you know, it would just have to be, um, uh, you know, it'd be like an exception to the, to the rule.
Okay.
You know, you could get like a, uh, and I'm not exactly sure how this would work. Um, whether it would be, you know, something where you just let the city clerk know, say, hey, this is the day that we're gonna do this, um, and so we're gonna be expanding the spaces for food trucks, um, just to let you know, you know, something like that. I don't think that there wouldn't be any cost or anything associated with it.
Okay.
Um, the only thing is, we were looking at maybe like a yearly, um, food truck license fee for the city. So when they come to the city, it kind of defrays the cost of the health agent. Um, but we're still waiting on the health agent to let us know exactly what her costs are, um, and to see exactly what the paperwork that the food trucks have to fill out. Um, so, by no means are we trying to make this a burdensome process or to, we just wanna make sure that we foresee, or try to foresee, any potential problems before they happen, um, and, you know, uh, prepare ourselves. Because I think that even still, there could be even more of a, um, influx of food trucks, which would be cool.
Yep.
Um, so, but I did want you to come just to get your thoughts, 'cause I know that you have, have the food truck event.
Mm-hmm.
And I just wanted, I, I thought it would be, um, apropos for you to be able to have some input and to, if you had any ideas or, um, any thoughts, uh, we'd be happy to, to listen.
Sure.
And, oh, and if you could say your name for the record.
Sure, uh, first name is Matt, last name is Tarleki. That's, uh, T-A-R-L-E-C-K-I.
L-E-C-K-I.
Yes.
And you're from?
Uh, abandoned building brewery.
Okay, your role there?
Um, the owner. I'm sure this has been covered already before, but as far as licensing now for them, do you know how that works?
It's through the, so it's exclusively through the health department.
Right.
As of now. Um, and, you know, one of the things was, so like, because of that, there is, um, you know, there is a permit that mobile vendors are supposed to get, and most food trucks haven't been getting it because they just don't, like, they don't know that this applies to them.
Okay.
So, uh, it's not necessarily, since we're just kind of sorting this out still, it's not something that's really being enforced. Uh, as far as I know, po- the health agent might be charging them, I think it's, uh, it's two, so it's ten dollars per day or two hundred dollars a year.
Right, so I think the vendors we've worked with, they come and get inspected once a year.
Yep.
And Jackie's aware when they're at our events.
Yep.
Um, and she says as long as they have our, our permit, they're good for the whole year.
Yep, and that's, and that's, we don't necessarily wanna do much more than that.
Okay, that's, I think the food truck vendors, that's fine with them. I think they do that with each town, has their own rules.
Right.
I think it's generally, that's the way it works.
And it is usually, from what we've investigated, it is usually done through the Board of Health.
Right.
Um, you know, I think the only, the only area where we're kind of looking at tightening it up is just, you know, having specific, um, areas within the city. So we, if, if, if we do get an influx that-
Right.
-food trucks can't just kinda go wherever and park in any public space and spend as much time there as they want, that there's a little bit of, you know, um, thought that's gone into, where do we want food trucks?
Okay.
Um, and, just FYI, the mill lots are one of the areas where we think food trucks should be.
Right, yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, um, now, the, our only, one of the issues with the mill lots, and you might have some insight into this, is it's, they're kind of quasi. So, the, the, I believe the lease is held by the fa- the mill owners.
Mm-hmm.
However, the pavement and the right of way is public, right? 'Cause the state funded the, it's like this weird-
Yeah, I, I've heard the same thing from my building owner. Um, you know, a lot of the lot that was redone is now public.
Right.
I think each building owner may still have previous, like-
A certain number of their own spaces, okay.
-their own runway that is technically their own private space.
Right.
Um, I know when we've had our Food Truck Fridays, we utilize both.
Right.
And consider it all a public space.
Sure, sure.
Have you had any resistance from the mill owner when you do that?
Our, uh, building owner's been very, uh, encouraging.
Okay.
I've, I've had no complaints by him or other tenants.
Right, that's great, and it seems like the events have gone off without a hitch.
Yeah.
At least from going to it and-
That's good to hear from my perspective.
Participating in it.
Yeah, um, we've, you know, had, I think, we've done five this year, so we've got a pretty good hold on.
Good.
Um, I know a lot of, like, for instance, like, when Brass Cat has, food vendors come over. That is private property, I guess?
Right.
Right, so would this apply to them too? No, so it's just for public spaces?
This is just for public spaces.
Okay.
So what we're looking at is just saying, in the commons, where does it make sense for food trucks to be?
Sure.
And, you know, what types of restrictions do we wanna put on that? You know, I think what, right now, what we're looking at is having, you know, um, probably one or two spaces in front of the promenade, in front of the boardwalk.
Okay.
Um, because that's a decent enough distance from brick and mortar. We don't, we, you know, we're not trying to protect brick and mortar, but we feel like it's not necessarily fair if you pull up a food truck in front of a brick and mortar restaurant and, you know, start competing directly, you know, door to door with them.
Right.
Um, so we think having, I think that we've talked about having some sort of a buffer there. Um, and then, we were talking about opening up this parking lot to be, you know, kind of like open to food trucks.
Right, right.
Um, and then having, um, you know, potentially a, a special event on public space, uh, um, option. You know, so, say, Cottrell Street was getting shut down, or Union Street was being shut down, there would be an option for, if it's not like a food truck catch area, that they would be able to go there, um, with, you know, some minor, you know, you know, like a, a one day permit.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Which I think has been successful for, like, Cultural Chaos, right?
Right, right, so that's kind of where we are, um, you know, and, and I, I, if, and I know that you probably have some contact with some of the food truck folks.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, I think really where we're gonna try to, like, have some concrete, um, bullets of where we want to have these and exactly what restrictions are, not, I guess restrictions isn't really the right word, it's more like guidelines.
Sure.
Um, you know, we think makes sense is probably gonna be not next Wednesday, but the following Wednesday. Um, 'cause that's when the, um, Jackie Duda's gonna come in, and so we're gonna try to have, like, hopefully some resolution, um, with this and get something out that makes sense.
Sure.
So, um, any other thoughts?
Um, most of the time, we have the vendors, it's per request for events.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I feel like there's almost more events than there are food trucks these days.
Right.
Um, which I think is probably why we haven't seen someone just like show up on the corner, you know?
Right.
Um, they're already pretty busy with their schedules now, but I feel like if there is an opportunity for them to, like, get on a schedule for a public space, they probably wouldn't object to that.
Right, and, and I'm thinking, you know, like, as, you know, I mean, it's been interesting to watch this process since we put this on our agenda, which I believe was, uh, over a year ago. Um, because, uh, this was in, exactly a year ago.
Okay.
So in just that one year, I feel like there's been a decent number of, um, food truck events that have come to East Hampton.
Right, right.
Um, so I think, who knows what the next year will bring? Uh, maybe some entrepreneurial people will be like, well, there's, doesn't seem to be enough food trucks to meet the demand, maybe we're gonna couple more.
Right, right.
And then, who knows, you know, so, um-
I feel like an honor of big notice, um, just letting the owners of the food trucks know that there's a process.
Right.
I feel like we've encountered a few times where they didn't even know it was something to do.
Right, they didn't know that they had to go to the Board of the Health or-
Right, right, and then there's usually a, at least like a, a one month, uh, notice to the Board of Health.
Yes, yes.
So sometimes they've been like, you know-
Scrambling like last minute.
-like a week of, and she's like, and, you know, it's, it can't be done.
Right.
So that's really the only trouble we've encountered, or not, not personally us, but, you know, it affects us if a vendor can't come out.
Well, and I think, you know, one of the ways that we can kind of, um, uh, assist in that is we can work with the city to, on the website to have, like, I know, for example, North Hampton has, on their website, uh, you know, something specifically that says food trucks, and the application will just pop up. Everything you need to know is right there, um, so that was one of the things I had asked Jackie Duda to, um, show, to bring us was exactly what paperwork, 'cause if we can get that on the website and streamline that process. Because really, I mean, this whole process wasn't about trying to restrict food trucks. Really, it was more like, how can we, um, encourage this as something that kind of enriches East Hampton, at the same time, doing it in a way that's gonna also protect our needs and, and make sure that we don't get taken advantage of?
Sure.
So, um, but I think that piece, um, is something that we can kind of like encourage the city to, once we get this, you know, squared away, um, to make a little bit more streamlined, so.
Quick question.
Yeah?
In terms of just placement of trucks in your area, for your events that you hold.
Right.
Are there any safety concerns or issues that, the placement, that, that the truck might fit better in some areas than in other areas, based upon, you know, somebody wheels in and the truck's over here versus over there?
Right.
I'm envisioning a space here and wondering where the best placement would be, but I, I wonder if you have any thoughts about?
Right, um, I'll say these, they don't usually fit in a normal parking space, um, only because a lot of them have generators on like the back of the, on the truck, or sometimes they, they wheel it off and put it behind the truck.
Right.
Um, for our events that are in a large parking space, we usually give them quite, you know, they kinda have a lot of room to move around in.
Close to the building, away from the building?
Uh, we, we usually keep it away from the building, um, that's not really, it was never thought of as a safety concern. We do that mostly so they can kind of create, um, almost like a, like a wall or fence so people can't come in and out, mostly 'cause we're serving alcohol.
Mm-hmm.
So we have to have the area roped off for the alcohol reason. Um, but as far as safety goes from being close to buildings, I can't, only with the generator could I see something being a problem. I don't know, I think the generator needs a certain amount of space away from a structure.
Right, 'cause it, it could not-
As far as-
Carbon monoxide, carbon monoxide.
Yeah, as far as, yeah, right, um, but, I mean, they're, they're roadworthy vehicles.
So I'm thinking of the, the, the pedestrian flow.
Right.
And, you know, going from the, from the sp- from the food truck to your, to your business-
Right.
-to the cars, is there a certain traffic pattern that-
No, I mean-
You've considered?
When we have, we have it roped off, so there's no vehicles coming in where the people are getting their food at, um, and we keep, uh, the traffic open so cars can go by behind the food trucks.
Behind the food truck.
Yeah, behind-
So it's, it's kind of a roped off.
So this is what it looks like, so if this is the building, then food trucks are here, and these are all parking spaces.
Yep.
And it's roped, and so there's, and then there's a, an entrance here, so they, they check ID right there. And so you go into this area and there's food trucks kind of as a wall.
But no cars.
But no cars.
No cars.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's, you know, and that's-
Sorry, that's a big question.
But it's like, New, New City, when they park down in front of the other brewery, um, you know, basically they just pull up, uh, either taking up like three parking spaces or they pull in, and so there's like a little island that comes out. Um, but there's not a lot of traffic around it, you know, they kind of, just the, the size of the vehicle kind of cordons off the space, and it's right up against the sidewalk.
Right.
So I would be concerned if it was across the street.
Yeah.
And then you have a food truck, and the only way to get to the food truck is across the street, and there's no sidewalk, that would be a, a problem, but if the food truck can pull up right against the sidewalk, I think that's, that's, that's the way to do it.
That's pretty much what you want.
People coming in on the sidewalk and then have enough line of sight around the truck.
Right, yep.
Or no traffic behind the truck.
That's, uh, yeah, also a deal.
Yep. Cool. So, um, we will, we are gonna take this up again, um, two weeks from tonight.
Okay.
Um, so, i- if within that time you encounter anybody that you think would be interested, um, I'm gonna try to reach out, um, to some of the food truck owners. You know, I, I, I wanna make sure that this is gonna be something that we don't like, pass something that is gonna have a negative impact on people wanting to do business in East Hampton. In fact, I was hoping, I really wanted to see if there was a way that we could tweak our zoning to encourage serveries, where food trucks could actually prepare the food and store the food and have something like that. I don't necessarily know that within our zoning, we can find a way to encourage that. I mean, it's already allowed within the zoning in a lot of different places.
Like a commercial kitchen?
Yeah.
Commercial kitchen.
Yeah, so where, where a food truck, where, like, a fleet of food trucks could rent out space and-
Right.
-repair their stuff and, and almost, you know, almost like a, um, you know, you rent a piece of kitchen.
Right.
And some storage space, um, but that's allowed within our zone.
Already?
Yeah, so, um, you know, it's, it's hard to, you know, encourage something that's already allowed.
Right.
So, other than saying, hey, we want people to, you know, come and do this in East Hampton 'cause we think it's a good idea, but, um, okay, cool. But, and if you think of any questions, feel free to, um, I don't know if you have my contact information, but, um, I can, yeah, I can give it to you.
All right.
Go from there, sounds good, thanks for coming.
Yeah, definitely.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for your input.
Um, all right, so, do you have new information for us, Tamara?
I do.
Okay, this is exciting.
All right, so what I wanted to do was really put down the different choices that we have and some of the pros and cons of each of those choices to help usher our conversation about this.
Okay.
So, the handout that I gave you is-
Do I have one?
Oh, I took yours, sorry.
You gave it and took it back.
Yeah.
Some of the, some of the different choices that we have and some of the pros and cons to each of those choices. Uh, so, the first one I have is just our current status, where we just don't do anything. Um, so right now, we don't have any mandated ordinance, um, that's aimed at reducing the negative impact of plastic bags. We don't have a trash, municipal trash service. Um, we do have Big E's and some other stores that are all, already giving, uh, actually, no, I think, um, Big E's is the only supermarket that has a recycling bin for plastic bags on its premises. Um, no other stores really offers that, and then we do have the bag share program within East Hampton. So if we did nothing at all from this point forward, choosing to not have a plastic bag would be the individual person's, um, priority, and it would be nothing in terms of what the businesses would be doing or not doing.
Right.
Um, another option is only doing an education program to get people to think about the choices that they're making prior to making those choices. And if we were to do that within East Hampton, there are some different things that we'd have to consider. Um, one of them would how would we do that education and outreach, and how would we target different populations? So I had had a meeting with the ECA Plus coordinator, however, um, that come to fruition as she is no longer there.
No.
So, um, that's a big what-if right now in terms of the education only program. It would require a commitment from ECA Plus to help us with some different educational components. One of them could be, for example, having an artistic sticker to put on cars, remind you, and, um, doors of stores, reminding people to, um, redo, reuse, recycle, bring in their bags, things like that. Um, we could also look at the schools as a way to generate the artwork that would be required to get that education piece moving. Another thing I considered, um, when we, and I didn't put this down here, but another thing we consider is that within the city of East Hampton, we have unique contributions to the city. So we have the artistic community, we have a multitude of different schools within such a small city, and we also have the map space, so that's the piece I would wanna talk with the, um, ECA Plus coordinator when they're hired to do. But I think we could also consider whether or not we wanted to, um, approach the mayor or the city council funds to provide any sort of incentive for that type of artwork to be considered. I think that's a choice we should put on the table. I know, um, in past city council meetings, Joe's had, Joe had talked about funds that are available for the city council, and I don't know if that would be an appropriate use of those types of funds to start a public education piece prior to any ordinance actually occurring, so I wanted to get your opinion on that.
Well, I think, um, the, you know, it, it would be interesting to, to talk to some of the people, um, like the mayor, uh, you know, that, it might not have to come out of the city budget, there might be art grants out there that are specifically geared to this type of educational, um, purpose, uh, which could be, uh, tapped into. And I think the schools would be really great, especially the high school, would be really, I know that they just did a window at, um, Chelmsford Falls Coffee Roasters.
Yeah.
You know, that's probably the kind of thing that, um, our teacher would be, you know, it's-
Right.
And, and, and maybe even the science teachers as well, 'cause it kind of bridges, it's cross-curricular.
I think so too, well, how would you feel about including more than our whole school in that effort though?
Sure.
Because I, I really think that would be a way to kind of unite the three schools, with the charter school, the private school, and the public school. All students are learning environmental tactics on how to, so, maybe in our next meeting, we could ask the representatives from each of the schools to show up.
Sure, maybe Williston can fund it.
Wouldn't that be great? So, I can contact those three.
Great, I think that's, I think that's a really good, regardless, I think that's a really good direction to go.
Okay.
Just because it raises awareness.
Mm-hmm, um, and it, you know, it repeatedly has shown that any sort of ordinance is going to be much more favorably considered by the city if it first has that educational component.
Hmm.
So, I really think even having, say, a twelve-month period to give businesses the opportunity to plan for this along with an educational component, that's planning, that, that's, what is that called? Prepping the public for this to happen could be, uh, be a usable tool.
Sure.
Um-
What do we call it, education component?
Because there wouldn't be any change in our ordinance if we only did that. If we said, hey, let's get people to really consider their choices that they're making through an education. Uh, here are some choices that you have, and did you know every time you buy a plastic bag, it's being used for twelve minutes and then it's going to not deteriorate for another billion years, whatever? You know what I mean, like, those types of, of educational handouts and more, um, forums that people can just learn more about the issue at?
Mm-hmm.
And, and that would be, if we didn't wanna do any sort of ordinance, that would be another option.
Initially, right.
Yeah.
Well, even, even if at all.
Well, if, if, there may be an intro, or, or a partial, and let me throw something out there. If we can have a, pass an ordinance that bans plastic bags perhaps, that bans paper bags, can we pass an ordinance that we, that posts the city's position
Mm-hmm.
on the use of certain products, or the use of cloth bags, recycled compostable bags, whatever,
Mm-hmm.
at the stores, at the, at the point of sale?
Mm-hmm.
Would that be, would that just, something to think about here for a moment? If, that would kind of not just say, we're gonna edu- regular education, but we're gonna have a requirement that says, listen, you really, whatever, you really believe this is important to encourage people to bring their own bags.
Okay, so hold on, let me just, let me just make sure I'm understanding.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, passing an ordinance that requires of anywhere that is giving plastic bags out to post a statement from the city on-
Requesting people to bring their own back?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think that's interesting.
That's usable on site.
I think that's, you know, 'cause then it's, it's a, because it's an ordinance, it would be required, and, and it wouldn't have, it, it not necessarily, I don't know, something to think about, I, I think it's, it's an idea.
And I think that also goes into the branding of this, that in order for the community to have the buy-in, there needs to be some sort of branding, both of the, you know, let's do this, and then the accompanied piece that would, that would lay out.
You could brand the, the, the message with a certain logo.
Yeah, yeah, and that's what I think-
In, in East Hampton specific.
Yeah, I mean, it could be the East Hampton seal with like a very, you know, concise statement, like, the city of East Hampton encourages the, you know, reuse of, um, of bags and, and bringing reusable bags, or something, you know, something simple, short and sweet.
Very simple, very short, very sweet.
But here, okay, so, uh, along with this education only, one of the things that I think we should consider is who would be doing this type of education? I think this is, this could potentially turn into another full-time job.
Yeah.
And, I know in my daily life, I'm not considered, I don't call myself an environmentalist per se, like, it's, I find this interesting from a social problems perspective, but I'm not, you know-
You're not ready to quit your job and be the plastic bag?
Yeah, you know, so-
Czar?
So, I did-
Czar, plastic bags.
My idea was, so, um, I talked with Dan Riss about the, um, possibility of creating in a standing committee, I don't know what the actual name, ad hoc standing, whatever it would be, but a committee that would be comprised of people who've been showing interest in this, um, throughout the process, and making sure that point people from the diff- so, making sure a person from the arts community is involved in it, making sure that we have representatives from the schools, making sure that we have representative from the business, make sure the student representative, um, an elderly representative, like, if we had that kind of a group that we could give some of the control over what that education would be and how that branding would be done, I think that piece could still happen in a more manageable way over the course of that year.
Energy and sustainability committee is still happening, I feel like this would be- I feel like this would be, this could fold into like an environmental committee of, you know, something we could, um.
The only thing is, right now, that committee only has Mayor and Goldstein on it.
Oh, it's one person.
So, it's a committee of one, because a lot, a lot of the reasoning for that committee was with the creation of the Green Communities.
Yeah, I was on it for a while.
And now, it's just, all of the, all of those grants that they needed to secure have been secured. So, it's kind of been not, and plus that, that's, I had extensive talks with Mayor about the feasibility of doing this within the city of East Hampton. And he was really, he had a lot of input. He also had a lot of concern that that particular committee was really focused on energy consumption, not on waste management. So, for people within the environmental.
I mean, I think it would be good to, to have this committee be, have a purview beyond just plastic bag. Like, I, I feel like it's a crime for the city of East Hampton to not, to, to not be focused on water bottles in our city when we have the best water, you know, like.
So, what would it be, a sustainability?
Sustain, like an environmental and sustainability committee or something like that, you know. So, they could look at things like, how do we reduce the number of water bottles in the city of East Hampton when we have some of the best water, you know, best tasting water in the country? You know, that just makes sense for us to be kind of going in that direction.
So, as far, as far as Dan, I had asked him if that would be a conflict of interest to point people and everything. And he said it wouldn't be and that we would be able to do that. I guess the question would be whether or not that would be a committee that would come from the city council or if that would be the result of partnering with the mayor and asking, really, it to be a mayoral appointment consistent with other committees within the city.
Right, yeah. That's interesting, cool.
So, that, that's another thought. So, you know, the pros with the education piece, and I think this is a huge part, is that it's the education that shows that both community members and businesses will be more likely to be on board if you have that education piece first. And there's also, if you do the education only, you can ask different businesses within the city who already have an environmental aspect to them, if they would like to donate any money to help with these types of efforts within the city. I don't know if that, I don't know if that can be really done from a government perspective or not, so. But that's just another thing to consider.
Can the governor, government ask for handouts?
I don't know, but could, could the committee go? I mean, ECA plus, I think, has before, they go to different, ask if they would be a part of Art Walk, Art Walk. But I really think that having ECA plus and using Art Walk as an opportunity to provide that information might be a really great partnership throughout the city. Okay, the cons is that it's been shown that education makes people feel better about change that's happening, but it doesn't make people suddenly wanna create that change. So, you know, it, without the funding and without any sense of this needs to go to ordinance, I feel like just the educational program is something that really is not necessarily under our, yeah. So, I really think that would have to be to help with. I understand what you're saying about this is a bigger issue than environmental and sustainability, and I agree with that. But I just think that in order for this, my motivation to get this committee moving would be to help with the ordinance.
Yeah, with the plastic bags, yeah.
All right. The third option would be fee for bags, regardless of what type of bag. If the business is giving out a bag, that they would have to have a fee for it. Now, Massachusetts, this is actually not a very common option. There's only a few cities that have used that, but most of them just put the ban out without any sort of compensation.
Oh, they're just banning? I kinda like this. Honestly, I think this is kinda cool, because I see it as potentially, if, you know, if you said it was, you know, ten or fifteen cents, that could add up to enough money to help fund an education.
Yeah, it could be self, self-promoting in that way over time, definitely.
Which I think could be interesting, and if there's not a lot of people using this. I mean, I think with, with a couple.
What did, what did I say, ten, ten or fifteen, oh, that wasn't, I didn't see that.
Yeah, like a pronged approach, you know? Which I think is.
For the, you mean using a combination?
A combination of these.
Yeah, I see that too as the best option, is doing the education along with.
Potentially a fee.
Fee. The difference with the fee for bags versus no fee for bags, I think would be where are we gonna put that money? If that came back to the municipality, would there be a program that, like, would it be that it would go to the Environmental Sustainable Committee in order to launch new environmental initiatives throughout the city?
That certainly would make sense to me.
You know, it could, it could also go to like, for like the, you know, city cleanup day could go to like buy trash bags and rakes and things that we could, you know. But I get it, like, if it goes to the general fund, like, who's saying that, you know, it's not gonna get used to buy a police car?
Right.
So, you'd need to establish a bomb.
Yeah, you'd have to have.
So, would that have to be included in the ordinance? That this money is only be used for?
Yeah.
You could use some help on that.
Yeah, I think it would have to be, uh, it would have to be a partnership with finance where they, like, we would state in the ordinance what we would want to happen and they would have to request that the fund be established.
Okay. I guess the other part with the fee for bags is if you look at the con, if you look at the pros and the cons.
So, am I have a?
Okay, really, it's just the, it's, it's the cons that I'm concerned of is that retailers will, will not be happy with having the additional layer of accountability. But that's an assumption we're making. And I had, I know I had told you before that there were some people in the community that were helping me work on a survey for different businesses. So, we've started that survey. I guess the only, my biggest concern is that I don't want it to be mistaken as we're gonna automatically go with the majority rules here with the survey. Like, if we need to make a decision about if we're going to have that kind of a survey, what are we going to do with the data?
With the data.
Is it going to help us inform that, oh, look, we do have the support for this? Or are we gonna use that as a benchmark for, wow, we have a lot of education to do? None of these businesses know where this education needs to start? Or how they would even implement this? And I think we could use those concerns really towards the education. But I don't, I, I kinda don't wanna give a survey out until we have that piece in place, 'cause I don't want people saying, now what? And then have us be like, we'll see.
Yeah, we'll see.
So, I'm not a-
I mean, you could put a little disclaimer, like, this is for data gathering only. By no means are your questions going to be used to create a specific, or just trying to gather information. I don't know, something like that, I'm sure there's some, you know, research way to put that.
Yeah. The other part of that is getting an access to population that we would wanna be interviewing or, or getting a survey from. I had talked with Barb about that and she had said that the cleanest way to do that would be to go through the, what's that called? Chamber of Commerce.
Chambers, yeah, yeah.
Because the other, she had no definitive way, no definitive listing of all the businesses within East Hampton.
Right.
And what, she told me that she would have to go back to each individual application for a business permit in order to get that information.
Right, and I, and I think, you know, one of the ways that could, it could, so if you have like a survey monkey, we could have the, the chamber is a great resource for that. I think another thing that could be done is put a link to it from the city website and put a Facebook blast out saying, there's a survey on the city website for businesses regarding plastic bag use. You know, go check it out. You know, so it could be like a multiple, you know, approach to try to get people to respond to that. And, and, did you say that you were developing some sort of survey? Oh, cool.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's great. I think, I think that would be really good information for us.
But I agree, I mean, it, you know, it started with looking at all the other existing surveys out there and a lot of them were like, would you be in favor of this or that? And it's just the way that the opinion is loaded is really more about, how do you feel about this? Not how educated are you about this topic? And so, they have really different connotations.
So, what's the point of the survey?
That's what I would wanna know, like, what?
What are we trying to do with it?
Are we trying to see whether or not there would be resistance to the ban? Are we trying to see at a baseline, how many businesses are for versus against it? Are we looking, are we placing any, any sort of weight on businesses versus private citizens?
Well, I know that the, you know, like some of the, at least from my conversations, some of the restaurant folks are a little, they're worried that, you know, if we're gonna, that we're gonna ban plastic bags because it's a staple for their. And I'm trying to say, you know, we're not necessarily looking to ban.
Right.
Plastic bags, we just want, we've recognized the fact that they could be potentially harmful to the environment and we wanna try to limit, you know, and, and so, like, but it is interesting that there is this perception that, oh, yeah, we're gonna ban them.
Yeah.
So, that's out there already.
Yeah, and I think that was another thing, like, I think if we look at this as a continuum of different options we have from doing nothing to having a complete ban, that is actually the middle of providing education and, and having a fee for the bags rather than an outright ban. That seems to be a little more plausible for people to accept it.
Right, right.
We just need to get the pieces from the municipal side all on board and.
Right. And so.
Develop the committee.
And so, your last one is, is a ban?
Yeah, just an outright ban.
Okay.
And the ban, the ban takes two, two forms. So, the fee for bags would be a fee for any bag, including a plastic bag. So, it would just be like, buy a bag, pay a fee. Whereas the ban, you, some of them just has the full ban and some of them has a ban of plastic bags that will be funded by paying for the paper or the alternative that way. So, the distinction between these two is really whether or not we would be banning plastic bags as part of that effort. There is a lot of, we've already looked at the science in terms of different options aside from paper versus plastic. And I don't think we need to make such a strict dichotomy between those two. But I do think we need to consider whether or not we still wanna allow for plastic bags or if we wanna say, if you're gonna have a plastic bag, it needs to be a post-consumer plastic bags in the Big E model? Or if we'll still allow people to have plastic bags, but just with a fee.
Right.
Post-consumer compostable pa, plastic bags?
I mean, uh.
The Big E ones are not compostable.
They're not compostable.
Aren't there compostable bags?
Yes, there are, they're corn, they're made of corn. There are hemp ones you can get, I think I said this last time, there's hemp ones, you can get hemp plastic bags, but they're not readily available in the United States. You have to order them from like China. But, you know, there's one, one of the things that I didn't see here that I think, you know, is maybe to be, I don't know if it fit in somewhere else, but, you know, 'cause I feel like one of the, we were looking at like a, a pronged approach of, you know, potentially a fee and then potentially an ordinance that requires places that give out plastic bags as their main source of carryout, having to have a receptacle to recycle, have, you know, to take them back.
I didn't let that out, didn't I?
So, and then, and I think that one, I think that one is, you know, one of the ones that's, you know, some of these are, are high-impact. Some of these are low-impact and some of these are kind of like mid-impact. I think the fee is kind of mid. I think the asking places like CVS, like Rite Aid, you know, some of the, the places that do give out plastic bags, asking them to have a receptacle like Big E's does.
I think you control that by looking at the square footage of the store.
Yeah, you might, that, that's.
Like you said, the store is doors over a certain number of square feet that.
And exempting restaurants from that. You know, I, I, I don't, 'cause I.
I'm, I'm, listen, I'm, I'm involved in faith.
Yeah, because I don't necessarily think, I mean, restaurants probably like won't, they won't do the volume that, like, a place where everything you buy, like, you buy a pack of gum, you put it in a plastic bag. You know, they won't do that type of volume. But, you know, I think that those, I would be fully in favor of, you know, having a fee and, and maybe even to go along with the, you know, having the recycling thing, a, a thing that goes above the recycling thing says, city of East Hampton, you know, have, having a statement from the city of why that, that's happening, with your idea. You know, I, I wouldn't be against that, but, um.
I guess if, if we're gonna do that, I guess the other part of that, that really brings, will brought, be brought forth is where would peo, where would these businesses take all these bags that they're collecting? And how would they actually do anything to recycle them themselves?
It's, I guess, that's a question that we have to ask Mike Superson. 'Cause, you know, like, and he probably, well, you know, it was, so, but you know who's interesting? Is, I can't, I forget the gentleman's name who came to our last meeting. He, Jim, is that Jim?
Cam.
He found this place in the Midwest somewhere that is turning these plastic bags into fuel.
Wow.
Turning them into oil or s, something.
That makes sense.
So, he had like this long scientific explanation of how they're doing this. I didn't get it, but it's, he said it's coming, so at some point, they might be able to sell these plastic bags that they collect. Because they can be used as fuel.
Wow.
That's interesting, right? I think you should sell them, sell them to builders and they can use them as insulation, right?
I guess what I don't understand, I don't, yeah, sure. But in terms of bringing the bag back to the store, you take your bag home, you put it in a bed, in a, in a, I have a real place where you put your bags.
Yeah, yeah.
Cloth, cloth item, ties, ties at the bottom, you stuff the bags in the top. Why not take five or six of them out, bring them to the store when you go to the store?
Right, that, that makes sense.
And just keep recycling them that way.
Right.
Where they don't get re, you know, you're not making new bags, you're using old ones, not for single use, but multiple uses.
I mean.
And I guess that would go into the.
Along with cloth bags, another.
Yeah. People will change those behaviors if they get reminders to change those behaviors. So, I think that, regardless if it's bring back your old plastic bags, bring cloth bags.
If you had that little item in, in the car, where you stuff your plastic bags and you hung it in your car.
Yeah.
And it's on your door.
So, we should, we should tell the school to start making those and whatever, sell them as a fundraiser.
When you grab the plastic bag and, or cloth bag, whatever you do, bring it in. That's the object, just get people to change the way they are.
Right. Well, and that's where I think the education piece is really important. And I think the only way to really have the education piece have an impact is to have some sort of funding for. And, and, and that might be through a small fee. And, and you, you cannot, all right, so, let's take a look at smoking in Massachusetts. You know, smoking rates have dropped in the last twenty years astronomically. Why? You guys know why?
The expense?
The expense, right? Anytime you monetize something, it's, it becomes either a motivator or a disincentive. So, you know, having there be a, a fee could be a very effective disincentive to just get plastic bags and not bring in your own bag. If you're like, oh, this is gonna cost me an extra thirty cents, maybe you'll bring in your own bag. I mean, and think of it, that sounds silly, but how many people will drive to, across town to save two cents on gas and they're only getting ten gallons, right?
Yeah, I know.
Like, so that could be a, a powerful motivator. And then.
I think it's a great motivator.
Yeah, and it doesn't necessarily put an unfair burden on the retailers. I mean, it does, they would have to train their staff to be able to add the fee and to, if people brought their own thing, to not have a fee. But I feel like that's probably not that. I think, you know, I think it would be good for us to maybe, maybe we should invite Mike Superson in and run, you know, since he's the sole grocery store operator in East Hampton right now, like, independent grocery store and, and see what he thinks about that. Do you want me to get in touch with him and ask him to come to our next meeting?
Well, am I asking the mayor and representatives from the schools to come to the next meeting?
Sure. And I mean, I think if we just, 'cause I mean, we have like a pretty, I, I feel like we're starting to have a clearer idea of where we're trying to go here. And, and maybe starting to bounce that off of, you know, some of the stakeholders would be a good step.
It would make sense to bounce it off of Rite Aid, Supersons. It would make sense to box it off of Rite Aid, CVS.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I don't know. Uh, I wonder, I wonder who, I wonder, the only, the only thing I wonder is like, what representative would they send? You know, like I.
Store, local store manager, maybe somebody from regional, maybe, you know.
Maybe, maybe. I'm gonna, okay, so let me.
The other thought about monetizing.
Yeah.
That I wanted to share is that I think for the North, we're okay. No one's gonna run to North Hampton if we, if we monetize it, although they might run to North Hampton. No, North Hampton didn't monetize.
They didn't.
They banned, but they didn't monetize.
But they can't get their plastic bag, right?
They can't get a plastic bag, okay.
Right.
So if you monetize, would you say, oh shoot, I'm gonna shop elsewhere because it's gonna cost me fifty cents, sixty cents by the time I'm done because I forgot, Mike?
I don't know, people seem to be so mad about only having the option of a, of a paper bag within North Hampton that I, I don't really know the comparison.
Then if you get folks running to North Hampton to get free paper bags, free, free paper bags.
Free, I mean, I think they might go to Big Y.
They don't pay, they don't pay for it. They might go to the Big Y, to our, you know, to our South here.
But I doubt, like, if you're.
I wouldn't, you know.
If you're gonna choose between shopping in East Hampton or shopping elsewhere, I doubt.
When you get to the store and you realize that the first few times, oh shoot, I forgot.
Right, oh, this is gonna cost an extra twenty cents. Maybe you'll bring your.
You'd be mad enough to spend a dollar to go, to go to another community.
But that, I mean, that does bring up a, another, um, I think really relevant point is that a lot of communities have some sort of baseline measure that then they repeat later on to see the effectiveness of the.
Of, of the program.
Right.
And I'm wondering if the ser- the, the kind of survey you're talking about might just be an observational survey?
Uh-huh.
Send someone with a checklist, how many people are bringing bags, what type of bags are they?
And those, yeah.
Are they bringing it into the store? As opposed to something that, I mean, I don't know, if it, what, that's why I'm asking, what questions would you ask in the survey? If, if you, if you plop somebody at a random, you know, pick a pen schedule of different stores and then you could, on different days or whatever, and you could, say, twenty percent of people appear to be bringing bags, five percent, nobody's bringing a bag.
Uh-huh.
If that's enough of a sampling to know, to have a baseline or not?
And, and do you have a timeline for the survey? I'm just wondering, um, you know, what we should be thinking about, because at some point we're gonna want to, you know, start wordsmithing within, within, and, and figure out exactly where this would fit within the ordinance. Um, and, and I can start doing that, I have no problem doing that. But I'm just wondering, uh, where, what kind of timeline we're on. Um, so if, you know, if you guys are looking to get the survey out in a couple of weeks or a month or, you know, are we on, um, I think it's gonna be important for us to determine whether we're on a, because we've already had this for, let me see.
Six months, five months.
Six months?
Five months.
Um.
Introduced in March, our first meeting was in May.
Uh, yes, so three sixteen, so.
First meeting in May, so five, five, four, five months.
So we're, we're seven months right now.
Five months.
Um, from when it was introduced.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, are we looking at another three months, another five months, another month?
I could, I'm, I have, I could bring the survey, we could, we could plan to go with the survey at the next meeting.
All right, so let's, let's, let's do that. Um, and then maybe have the survey out for a couple of weeks and so, you know, I would say if we could try to get this wrapped up before the new year, that would be great.
Uh-huh.
Um. And, and I think that gives us.
That might, that might be great, but then we're hitting the holidays and I really wanna.
That's why I said four.
I know, I know, but we, I don't, are you thinking wrapped up by November fifteenth?
No, like, February, like, this summer.
So you start getting Thanksgiving and, 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 and Christmas holidays that I think you're gonna face.
That's okay, we'll set, we'll set, we'll s-
People, nobody, nobody paying attention to the summer.
We'll set a lofty goal, we'll set a lofty goal to try to at least, and, and generate enough interest and, and get enough input before then, so we can refine what, whatever we need to do and start looking at that.
Sure. Set the lofty goal.
Lofty goal.
I think we should plan, I think we should have the goal if anything goes live by November.
Okay, cool, what's that, April first?
I don't know.
April twenty, April twenty, April twenty fifth.
Oh, I think it might be April twentieth, actually.
Yeah. Later in April, but it's not April fifteenth.
Yeah, no, okay, all right.
Um, with some of this, in, in terms of the, the survey, I can move with, I can move forward with that and we can plan to do that for the next meeting.
Okay.
My concern about starting with talking about the educational program component to it with the mayor and the schools and everything is that without the ECA plus person there to give input on how they would be doing that, that might be putting that card behind for the board.
Right. Didn't we, we hired a new ECA person, right?
I thought we did.
Yeah, we did.
Ju- Julie was fired last week.
Oh.
Yeah.
I did not notice.
Yeah.
Wow.
I lived two weeks ago, yeah.
So we have nobody now. So our new ECA plus person is no longer there.
That is correct.
Because Burns left for NPR. Wow.
Burns left, we had another person, since Burns, another person is no longer here. I don't know the details behind that, I'm not that active.
Wow. Interesting, okay. Well then, um, so we won't, we'll kind of put that off and, and put that in our, um, you know, in the top of the heap as we feel that this is important, but we can still move with the other things. Um, and I'll, I'll contact Mike Superson and ask him to come.
Birth date is Saturday, April twenty second.
Oh, twenty second, yeah, that's right between twenty fifth and the twenty, yeah.
What about, um, who do we want to be looking?
At the committee?
Yes, would that be, I almost think that was a mayoral committee versus city council. It would, it would get that broader base.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think, I think most of the committees like that are mayoral committees, like, how many city council committees do we have? I don't think we have.
I mean, it could be like a, a standing committee for a very short period of time, so like with the, um.
It could be an ad hoc, I mean, we, like, if it was city council, we'd have to do an ad hoc.
Okay.
Um, but if it's mayoral, it could be actually something that extends beyond this particular topic and, you know, maybe br- branches off into other environmental issues in these, you know, like the, uh, whatever the chemicals they just found over the barn in Saco for at the airport, you know, like, that affects our water, you know, like, they could be in, um, doing things around that. Did you hear about that?
A- actually what I heard was that there is a ridge in between around Route two oh two that blocks much of.
Oh, God.
In the north of, of what's the south.
Oh.
That's what I, that's what I heard.
That's good.
I'm not aware of the geol- the underground geology, but I understand that, that there is.
Okay, that's good. Well, hopefully the landfill doesn't leach out anymore.
Just like, just like there's, there are some other. Right. There are some other underground, you know, geology here, that blocks and separates certain areas of, of East Hampton elsewhere.
Right. Okay. Yeah, yeah. That's good to know. Well, the environmental committee could, I mean, I'm sure there's other things that they could tackle once this is kind of underway.
I think so too, and I think that the, even after we get all of this done, there is likely to be a lot of technological updates to the bags that are available.
Hmm-hmm.
So being able to have an environmental committee that could update that periodically and then send a recommendation to us.
To the city council, yeah.
Would be, is, that's more sustainable for the city versus just keeping it in ordinance.
That's a good. Right, yeah, I, I think that's good. All right, and I'll contact Mike Superson and our representatives from, from the other, like the Dollar Store and the other stores that might, see if I can get them to come in and have some input.
Okay.
Any other thoughts? Thanks for doing all this work.
Oh, yeah, it's, I'm sorry it took me so long to get it together and to move forward, but I feel, I feel that this approach definitely has a way to make it East Hampton versus.
Yeah, we don't need the cookie cutter ban, that's not our style.
Yeah, I like that.
I think we're doing right, and we.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I think we've thought all sides of this as much as possible.
We're doing our due diligence.
It's actually been a good, a good process.
Yeah, so, um, okay, uh, any other items?
Hmm.